All right, I call this meeting to order. This is today's date is September 26th, 2022. My name is Richard Parker, I'm the P and Z Chairman, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. We do ask that you turn off all electronic devices, all cell phones, click them off, click them off, click them off. I'll leave mine in the car, Frank, turn your phone off. And as a reminder, this is a public meeting and is being recorded. If you would like to speak tonight, we will give you an opportunity. But we ask that there be no repeat comments. So if your neighbor has said one thing, don't you get up and say the same thing. Just let's have one comment per person but different from each. Elected officials appoint this commission, which has six regular members and three alternates. And please note that our commission is an advisory commission. We cannot rezone anything. We're just an advisory commission to advise the city council. That's what our function is. So the city council has the power to rezone, not us. Four members make up a quorum, and we'll call the roll now. Jamie, please call the roll.
Sure. Chair Parker?
Present.
Vice Chair Kirk Patrick.
Present.
Commission Member Beasley?
Present.
Commission Member Black?
Present.
Commission Member Rome is absent. Commission Member Wright is absent. Commission Member Gambel is absent. Commission Member?
She's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here you are. Sorry. Commission Member Nelson?
Present.
And Commission Member Valreiner is absent.
So do we have a quorum?
Yeah.
We have a quorum. We're going to go ahead with this meeting, although we have a problem about the posting of the property. Each property for rezoning is supposed to be posted with a large sign so that the public knows about the rezoning and can come to this meeting and speak. However, due to some mix-up, there was no signs posted on any one of the properties. And so, we're going to hear everybody who's here who wants to speak. We're going to hear what you have to say. We go through everything, but we're not going to vote. Instead, we're going to have a special meeting in two weeks on September the 10th.
October 10th.
Uh, October the 10th. I'm a month behind, aren't I? October the 10th. And we'll vote at that time, and if anybody else comes to the meeting who didn't come tonight, we'll let them speak if they want to. But we're going to have to come back. This is a procedural matter. The property has got to be posted. And for some reason, it was a snafu and it didn't get posted. So, we're sorry about that, but we are going to listen to you tonight. We're not going to sit here, everybody, and we're going to have this meeting and listen to you tonight. So, our first order of business is to approve the minutes from the last two meetings. We had a meeting on July the 11th, which was a special call meeting, and another on July the 25th. Those minutes were in your packets. I hope everybody read them.
Motion to approve.
No motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Beasley, second. All in favor, say aye. In the post. All right, the minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is a rezoning request. Mr. Darren Lucas, applicant, to present a request to rezone property from medium-density residential, MDR, to general business, limited use. That's GBLU. Property is located at the terminus of Whitesell Drive, west of the intersection of Whitesell Drive and Hupman Mill Road, addressed as Zero Whitesell Drive, Whitesell Drive, and consisting of Almanzt County Tax Identification Number 107165. Is Mr. Lucas here?
Mr. Parker and Mr. Lucas are here, and now Lawson Brown will be representing Lucas in instruction as I have gone in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Go ahead.
Okay, for the record, my name is Lawson Brown, practice law with the Vernon Law Firm in 522 South Lexington Avenue. And it's my pleasure to be back in front of you, and it's particularly my pleasure to be back in front of you with positive staff recommendation on this particular request. As you recall several months ago, two of the parcels to the east of this particular parcel were in fact recommended by the staff for rezoning in the same fashion that we have requested tonight. The GBLU, the Whitesels there, are the ones that we had rezoned a few months ago. This commission recommended it to the council, and the council passed the zoning. This particular parcel, as you can see, is contiguous to an existing apartment complex to the west. It's been there for a number of years. And this particular parcel is owned by Mrs. Newton, Sam Newton's widow. Mr. Newton, after signing his contract, passed away several weeks ago. But I'm here representing not only Darren Lucas and his family's company, but also Mrs. Newton, who was requesting that it be rezoned. Obviously, it is consistent with the other zoning in the immediate area. It's a logical extension of existing zoning for the parcel located to the west. And in fact, it is recommended by the staff because it is consistent with the long-range plan for general business use. I and/or Mr. Lucas are happy to answer any questions. I will say that on the 10th, which you rescheduled to, I will not be here. But I will say, Mr. Ryan, my part, I will be able to come that evening since this is a public hearing.
Public meeting.
Thank you.
Yes. City Council is the only body that has a public hearing. So we just have a public meeting. So we thank you. We'd like to ask a few questions. Has there been a neighborhood meeting of any kind since the neighbors are multifamily, I guess?
No, we have not had any meetings. On the last rezoning request, we did talk to a couple of the neighbors. I think one of them came to the hearing, one is contiguous to the other parcels that were done several months ago. This is vacant property, and again, invites an existing apartment. It's been there for 25, 30 years.
Anyone else who'd like to ask Mr. Brown any questions? Nope? Is there anyone here tonight? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone here tonight who'd like to speak to this matter? Okay. We will hold our decision for two weeks, our vote for two weeks. But we thank you, Mr. Brown, for your presentation. And we'll wait for two weeks, once the property is posted, and see if we have any other comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Y'all look great tonight.
Our next item is a rezoning. Mr. Frank Longus. Frank, if you want to come forward, we're going to read your request. Mr. Frank Longus, applicant, to present a request to rezone property from light industrial, LI, to mixed-use, limited use. That would be X-LU. Property is located north of the intersection of Interstate 40 and Maple Avenue, addressed as 2444 Maple Avenue, and consisting of Almanzt County Tax Identification Number 132806. Mr. Longus.
Mr. Chairman, members of the P and Z Board, thank you for letting me attend this public meeting. I'd point out to you that you do have a quorum. I'd also point out to you that's a policy of the City of Burlington to post the properties as to a zoning meeting, but I don't think it's part of the city ordinance. The part of the city ordinance, my memory is, has to be posted for public viewing for the city council that.
That's correct.
So I think, you know, if this doesn't mean without the posting, this would be an action without meaning. You could take action tonight as a recommendation or whatever. I'm not going to ask you to do that. I will let you do your own policies, Board, to make that decision. But we're here tonight on behalf of the applicant. The present location of this property is at 244 Maple Avenue. It consists of 5.24 acres, which is a fairly large tract. If you're familiar with the property, it started out a number of years ago as a Howard Johnson's motel. Since that time, it's changed hands probably three times, and it's still used as a motel. In candor with this body, the current owner experienced some vacancy loss due to COVID, and has now come back to the former active position in the community that this motel had in the past prior to COVID. It's still active, still in use, still rents properties on a daily basis. However, they were approached in candor by a group by the Federal North Carolina, who is called Good Home to Federal. They have experience in taking existing motel properties and converting them to multifamily projects. They try to market their properties on an annual rental basis on a lease. Their target market is millennials. Those people as a whole do not want fancy apartments, do not want expensive apartments. At the same time, this company does not try to target low-income properties. They try to have market rental values for their properties. I think the council, excuse me, the staff provided you copies of some of their prior conversions. What they propose here is to convert the existing motel into 135 multi-units. Most of those units would be one or two bedrooms. The facility on 5.24 acres has over 200 parking spaces. It is an exact property that the developer tries to find and wants to convert because of the nature of the structure of the business that's existing there in the motel. They think it would be an excellent opportunity to convert it to multifamily apartments. The motel use is still requested in this multi-district on conversion and rezoning. We request that in case something happened in the future, that this project wouldn't go through, that the existing hotel slash motel use would be permitted in the multi-district. As you probably are aware, this property is now zoned light industrial. And light industrial does permit hotel motel use, but it doesn't permit multifamily. Multifamily uses in Burlington are fairly limited. The most that you would choose from would be high-density residential or what we're requesting in multi-district. The multi-district with the limited uses gives us the opportunity to convert this to multifamily and not have an issue that would be in the HD classification because of 250-foot limited linear footage requirement under the current zoning code under the residential section. So, we desire to have a multi-district. We have limitations that it can only be used basically for hotel motel use, multifamily use, and for sitting dining in restaurant. And the reason for that last use is because the facility here has in the past and does have a fairly large restaurant area for kitchen that hasn't been used for several years. But the developer sees that as an opportunity to make that powerful as an overall theme for this property besides its multifamily. The property, as you can see, is located near the interstate, and it's part of the Burlington, what I call interstate corridor commercial area, which Burlington has indicated it wants to make improvements on Maple Avenue. We feel like that this particular zoning request fits within that plan for the city. It's also compatible with all the uses next door. The property, as you can see, is joined by either light industrial or other uses. But the key factor here, I believe, is that this would be an attractive zoning that allowed for multifamily addressed to millennials, provide housing for that market that's not available in Burlington at this point in time, according to the statistics of the developer. And it feels like that this is a good product. The property is a good product. It's contiguous to any properties that are compatible, and it fits within the total comprehensive plan of the City of Burlington. And I point out that the staff made recommendations favorable to this. I'm available for any questions, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone on the commission that has a question? John?
I have a question. Do you have an idea what the rents would be based on the current market prices? What would the rent be for one bedroom?
I don't know that. They don't know that yet. They have statistical information that the millennials, that they are trying to target for this property, who would rent the property, each apartment on an annual basis, that that income level is 45,000 to 120,000 per procedure.
And why do they think it would be popular with millennials? I looked at the other cities. It was Erie, Pennsylvania, I mean, not millennial hotbeds.
Well, the reason for millennials is because we do have a population growth in this area of apartment dwellers. We're located as a corridor between Guilford County and the Research Triangle Park. And a lot of people who first get their jobs and start, either working in Greensboro or in the Research Triangle Park, and most of the people who are the potential tenants are starting out with businesses. In other words, they're, you know, not in upper management, but in a position that they're getting started, and maybe have a couple of years of experience with the company.
And I have one more question. Would their rental agreements be annual?
Yes.
Okay, because it won't turn into a extended stay or anything like that?
No, that's not their model, and they do not target the properties below income. As I say, their target right now is millennials who have an income of about 45,000 to 120,000 plus. Now, most of the millennials that they're targeting don't want any apartment at great deal expense with a pet area where you can walk your dog. But they do want, you know, a pool, they want an exercise area, and they want to have a meeting area where they can have social gatherings. This property allows that to be done, and currently in the structure, if it exists, it would work. They would just be converting motel rooms, for example. Take two motel rooms and convert it to one apartment. And those pictures that they have from the other projects they've done. And I have those if you'd like to see them. I'd be glad to pass those out to you if you have none seen.
No, they're looking.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Yes, go ahead.
Back on the question with companies, Good Home, how long they've been in business, and how many other successful communities have they launched or actually rented right now?
Well, I can't answer that because I didn't ask them those questions. I just asked them to find out about this particular project. And according to the person who owns this property, he's done due diligence to find out that they're supposedly very reputable and been very successful. He would have entered into agreement with them.
I would like to see some.
Well, I'd like to be able to give you that, but I'm not able to give you that because that'd be contractualism, and I'm not even doing it. I can just tell you the proposed uses.
Just my personal concerns, anybody can build a website, make it look really good. And then Maple Avenue in and of itself is already a problem if you ask any law enforcement officer in the city or the county.
That's why I think this is better than the existing site as a motel.
I would agree with you, provided it's done correctly.
Well, the people, as I understand it, had the financial wherewithal to do a good project, had experience to do it, and desire to do it here and put the money in it that's required. That's all I can say. Any other questions, sir? All right, well, go ahead. Do they have anything in North Carolina besides this? I think there may be something in the federal area about me. I don't mind.
Is that big though?
They're home-based, so it's not like New York coming down and buying something in Flint against us.
Understood. Were there any calls concerning this rezoning?
Just informational calls. We didn't receive anything, but...
Okay. Well, Frank, we'll do the same thing as we did before and postpone our vote for two weeks. If you'd like for you to come back.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your attention and hope you've given good consideration at the time period.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Our next item. Mr. Oliver Cager. I may have said that wrong. Applicant to present a request to rezonate properties from medium-density residential, MDR, and medium-industrial, MI, to medium-industrial, limited use. That's M-I-L-U. The property is located at the terminus of South Anthony Court, on the westerly side of Kek Drive, south of Anthony Road, addressed as 2347 Kek Road, Zero Anthony Road, Zero South Anthony Court, and Zero Kek Drive. And consisting of Almanzt County Tax Identification Number 120225, 120226, 120240, 120241, 120242, 1204245, sorry, and 120259, and 120277. That's a lot.
What was that third one again?
120240.
Okay, thank you.
That was it.
I was going to ask the same thing.
So, we'll ask you to state your name and tell us about this rezoning.
Chairman Parker, my name is Paul Coons, I'm the attorney with Hotel Coons &amp; Hotel.
Yes, sir.
Oliver's here with me as well. He was originally on the list because he was engineer, doing a lot of work with staff as they worked through this zoning, or rezoning. And this parcel, as you correctly stated, is split zone right now. It's currently zoned medium industrial and medium-density residential, depending on the tracks. Obviously, there's a number of tracks in here. And what we're looking to do is rezonate to medium industrial, limited use, cutting down on the number of available uses that are in the medium industrial, and rezonate all the way. We prepared a little bit more of a presentation than the last two, given that there are residential properties nearby, and it provides a little bit more background. And so we have a team here to answer questions as well. We're going to start with Ryan Fraser, who is the Senior Vice President with Vision Real Estate Partners, to speak to a little bit of background on the company and the project that we're working on. And he may have some handouts for you as well. Ryan, here.
Oh, I do have some handouts here, so I'll just...
Say it's your name again and where you're from.
Excuse me. Ryan Fraser, Senior Vice President of Vision Real Estate Partners.
Where's that located?
That is in Mount Lake, New Jersey.
Okay.
I did send this presentation along. I'm not sure if that can be pulled up. If not, not a problem. I can just commit to share. Certainly. Oh, great. What's up, Frederick? So, as Paul said, and I'll keep this brief, I did just want to introduce the firm, Vision Real Estate Partners. Again, my name is Ryan Fraser. I run our investments team. Vision is an owner-operator-developer. Again, we're based in Mount Lake, New Jersey, which is about 20 miles outside of New York City. We have about 6 million square feet under management, ownership and management today, and that's kind of a mix of commercial, Class A, office, retail, and industrial space. We have a fully vertically integrated operation, and what I mean by that, we have in-house investments, as I said, but also in-house development. I'm joined here by Honor Hamad from our development team. In-house property management, construction, architecture, leasing, all those functions kind of operating under one single group. And that's kind of indicated on Slide 2. So if you just kind of scroll forward, just to give you a sense of some of the partners, both on the financial side of our business, the tenants that we've worked on behalf, the townships that we've worked on behalf. As you can see, you know, very kind of large-scale credit, Fortune 500, even Fortune 50 type organizations that we've been able to execute on behalf and complete projects for. I'll mention the township of Saddle Brook in the middle of their crest. We're completing their administrative, build a suit, a 70,000-square-foot project on behalf of the township. So we work very closely with our townships, our tenants, and our financial partners to deliver, you know, Class A products to the market. I'll briefly touch on, if you go to the next slide, just one kind of case study, and then I'll turn it over. But this is a project that we worked on in Whippany, New Jersey, 200-acre site. It previously housed Appitel Lucin, a 1.5-million-square-foot facility for Appitel Lucin. Old antiquated office space that was built in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. We took that older facility, we demolished a million square feet. We took the remaining half a million square feet and added another 200,000 square feet. That's the picture you see in the top right corner. And ultimately, what you're left with was 700,000 square feet for Bayer Healthcare's North American headquarters. So, you know, a global organization, incredibly important facility for them. On the same site, in the bottom right picture, we took a portion of the acreage and constructed, ground up a 200,000-square-foot investment headquarters for MetLife Financial. Forty percent of MetLife's revenue is generated out of that building, so obviously a very important facility for the company. And we take a lot of pride, humbly, but take a lot of pride in the fact that we were able to deliver, you know, those two projects that were very successful for the tenants, and obviously, you know, successful for those tenants. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I am going to turn it over to our engineer with Bowler to kind of talk a little bit about the rezoning.
All right. Chairman Parker, the rest of the commission, my name is Charlie Out of Bowler Engineering. Out of our out of Rob. So expanding a little bit more on what Paul was talking about earlier. The assemblage of parcels, there are four parcels that are already zoned medium industrial. Two are split zone between medium industrial and medium residential, and then the final two are fully in the medium-density residential. The surrounding area is predominantly medium industrial around our property assemblage with a diverse range of uses. And my client is seeking to bring this area into conformity with the developments really happening around it. And with the adjacent residential parcels to the east, this area made sense for one degree of rezoning to take some uses completely off the table. In our application, we are proposing to take out the following 10 uses, including tenant collection major and minor, passenger terminal for rail or bus, telecom tower, minor or concealed, automotive repair and servicing, parking right facility, automotive towing and storage lot, fuel, oil, bottled gas distributor, gas energy conversion, and wind energy conversion. So we're already trying to eliminate to, you know, get some of the uses right off of that. The remaining list of uses that as a part of our application represents the flexibility... represents the flexibility that the medium industrial zone allows and that we see there in the area. And then finally, I did want to make note that the Big Alman's Creek Study in 2018 did designate this area as a potential economic development site. And a quote from that study, "Land in the Big Alman's Creek Study can also serve to some extent as Burlington's industrial reserve for an unknown but expected industrial development." This concept is supported given the area has available acreage and ideal access to North Carolina highways and national interstate routes. And with that, Paul.
So you can see, we've put a lot of work into this already, but one of the things that we have done and...
And, excuse me, as each speaker comes up, do you mind just introducing yourselves?
Again, so I'm Paul Coons, representing the applicant. And I'm sure that multiple folks are here for this project that are from the community. And so we sent out a notice that went out on Friday. I don't know whether anybody's received it or not. And so we have scheduled a neighborhood meeting for Monday, October 17th, 6:00 PM. I spoke to David over at the Baptist Temple in Alman's County, which is near this property. They're not on South Anthony Court, their drive and Baptist Temple all goes out to Anthony Road. But they're just, if you're looking at the map, they're just to the left of this location. And we just felt like we wanted to have a location that was convenient for everybody in the neighborhood to be able to come and meet the group and talk one-on-one with that group. And we're having it in the same place as the, in the fellowship hall we've voted recently, just to make it easy and accessible by everybody. So, we're open to answering any questions that you have. We've tried to cut down the list of uses that could otherwise be used in a medium industrial so as to be good neighbors to the folks that are out there. But obviously, if it is already zoned medium industrial. So we're open to questions that you have.
I have one.
No.
Oh, I can't hear, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm here. Hang on. So this packet we were given, are these projects that y'all have already done somewhere else? Does it have anything to do with this land?
Ryan Fraser, again, for Vision. Yes, those are completed projects, those are case studies simply for informational purposes regarding our company.
Paul, when you say limited use, you have hit us here with 45 different uses, which we don't consider limited use, 45 uses. So, are all of these things being considered? Or can you further cut this down so that, I mean, you could put a beauty shop out there, a post office? Yeah, microbrewing?
Well, that's one of the reasons we're kind of here for that conversation is we took a first swipe at it in terms of, with staff, to try to cut it down. I don't know how many total uses you have, but we've already eliminated some of the ones that are the most intense is what we were shooting for, and then leaving flexibility on the rest of it. So if there are other uses that are concerned with this board or the community, I mean...
Well, I'm sure that's why most of these people are here, because you've given us so many different uses, indoor, outdoor, kennels, yes.
I'm wondering if it would behoove us to look at the fact that you're planning a meeting with the people on the 17th, is that correct?
It is.
Our next meeting to vote would have been on the 10th, is that correct? Wouldn't it be prudent for us to have our meeting after they meet with the public? I kind of figure, I don't know that I want to vote on something prior to their meeting with the people out there.
Because a lot of these concerns will be addressed in your...
Yes, I think that a lot will be handled at that point. I don't think it would be prudent for us to schedule a vote on the 10th and then have a meeting with the people on the 17th after the vote.
Do you think we should just then wait till the next month and have a meeting?
That is my...
Chairman Parker, our approach to it was that we had run through staff and cut it down. And then we thought that it would be better to, before we go to the neighborhood, to come to you guys to get your input in terms of, are there other items that are on the list? So that then, when we go to the neighborhood, we have a smaller list if there are things that need to come out of here. You know, the reality is, will there be a post office there? I would say that is extremely unlikely. Yeah, or, again, very unlikely. So my approach, and I didn't hear what you're saying, Mr. Black, but my approach was simply to come to you, get your feedback, because you have these hearings all the time. If there are items that you don't want to see on the list, so then when we go to the neighborhood, it is a smaller list.
Well, I appreciate that, but I still feel that it would not be prudent to vote on something prior to a hearing with the people that's gonna be affected.
I mean, I think the more, like, prudent that you said, it would be better to have them. Because, I mean, they ask concerns, and the great thing about that is, is typically, we find that after you have that meeting, there's...
Makes it easier on you.
No, no, it's not easier on us, it's just that when you come to a neighborhood type area, sometimes they're off handling that first, because a lot of things can get negotiated out if, when they can.
It really benefits you if you have a neighborhood's approval. If you meet with them and y'all hammer these things out, then you come here. It's a lot easier on you. But, once again, I would not feel comfortable voting on something prior to the meeting.
May I ask a question? If I vote this truthfully, you want it rezoned, but there is no stated objective as to what we're going to use for? It's a blank slate right now?
It's a limited use.
It's a, we're limiting the uses. So right now, a good portion of the property is zoned medium industrial. So all the potential uses in medium industrial will be allowed on those sites. And so what we've tried to do is cut those, that really broad list, I know we left a lot of them on there, but we've already taken a lot of them off. And we've tried to cut that down to limit the use. It would be different if it was zoned all residential and we were coming in and completely changing the nature of the zoning, it would be a different conversation. But there's already medium industrial zone on this site.
Not all of it, some of it is agricultural, some of it is a park on the side.
Medium density residential on part of it as well, that's right, a split.
But the examples are also corporate headquarters, but you're not planning on building a corporate headquarters there?
Yeah. So there are some examples of industrial developments, I didn't touch on those, but if you flip to the back of the pages, there are some examples. And I think ultimately, as Paul said, we would want to comply with the zone. And what does that mean? That ultimately means an industrial, modern industrial development. And we'll discuss that in detail, obviously, at the neighborhood meeting, if that is the plan.
Well, can't you take the rest of these things off the table if that's what you're, I mean, and just have four or five things here and instead of, you know, aircraft parts, sales, maybe? You're not gonna do that? Why don't you take this off the list?
I think there are other uses that we can certainly have a conversation and we're already prepared to remove. I would say using that as an example, with the airport right across the street, we actually could have a tenant that may want to have that as use. And that's why completely limiting it can ultimately impact the leaseability in the future. So we need to be sensitive to that. But we're also sensitive to what you all are saying regarding the uses in the neighborhood. And I think that there are some that we can take off, that's probably part of the broader conversation, I suppose. That's what it sounds like to me.
When you say industrial park, what do you mean by that? Manufacturing park or an industrial?
Potentially, like manufacturing, as, again, as allowed in the zone. You know, warehouse distribution type spaces.
I think one of the, what would behoove you greatly, to me, just in my opinion, would be some sort of layout of how this is going to be configured, rather than just this mass of land. Because what you have, you have houses in the rear of the property. And the property seems to fall off back that way, to some degree. But I think if you had a artist's rendering, or a layout, or a site plan, or something like that, I think that would be a great tool for these folks to know where things are going to be. Because if you have your buildings up towards the front of that property, it doesn't bother their residential side things nearly as much. But if the buildings are in the back and no one knows what the buffer is...
Unfortunately, this is not a conditional zone.
I know, but...
I think, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we table this until the next meeting in November, actually.
Mr. Chairman, my only suggestion would be, since there are members of the public...
I make that as a motion. We have a second to Mr. Black's motion. Second. Any more conversation about that? Are there any time constraints that would hold you up if we didn't vote for another month?
Yes, of course there are.
Severe.
There always is.
Severe. Or can you wait until the end of November? And we'll meet before Thanksgiving.
Your next regular meeting is the 24th of October, so that would be...
That would be after the...
That would be after the...
That would be, that's, that's fine. That's why I wasn't sure if this would replace that then. My motion may have, if I may amend it, to October, what'd you say, the 24th?
That's right.
I didn't mean to interrupt the motion, but I kind of did. My only comment was, whatever you do with the motion, we'd like to hear what the folks who've come tonight say, haven't said, to all of you. Because in the event that they, if you do continue it and they can't come back on the 24th, then you wouldn't have a chance to hear.
We're gonna do everything but vote on the re-zoning. So, but the motion on the floor right now is to vote on the re-zoning on October the 24th. We have a second.
Just for this re-zoning, Mark?
Yeah, just for this one. Is there any other comment about that? All in favor of waiting till October 24th to vote on this, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, we'll vote on the re-zoning October 24th. But, for right now, near this meeting, we will ask anybody here who would like to make a comment about this project to, the floor is open for public comments. Now, any additional questions?
Thank you. My name is Diane Stalls, I live at 2633 Kett Drive. My property backs up to this property. I want to point out that the property, the lower property in question is medium density housing right now. And I want to tell you that I have a civil engineer friend of mine help me navigate the UBO. And I can clarify for you that there are 53 medium industrial uses in the UBO. I can't remember if I have one or not in my folder. There are 53, they graciously cut it back to 45, which is just a rock in the bucket, in my opinion. Thanks for cutting out that eight, but 45 is a lot. And we've also studied the buffers for different industries. I know that it's 1,000 feet for some things, it's 40 feet for other things. So we're well aware of what that looks like, 40 feet's not far. And I know that if it's a certain type of development, you have to plant so many tall trees per 100 feet, you have to plant so many short trees per 100 feet, you have to plant shrubberies, or in the case that you have a burn, you can cut the, you can tell, we've read the UBO. So, I've made my neighbors aware of what's in there, and I looked at the document carefully. I have any, I know that these people back here are well within the rights to build the property. I get that, I know the owners, or in talking to owners. I know that he's well within his rights to develop this property, I understand that, I understand your job is to make good recommendations for the city of Burlington. However, I would point out that the firm from New Jersey really doesn't have a dog in despite over then developing the property. I do have a dog in despite, and all these people do, this is our home. Where we have lived for, I've lived in my house for 35 years. There are many people that have lived there 50 years or more. And so, it's agricultural behind the house now, there's cornfield back there. We're concerned about things like, is this gonna be developed in multiple tracts? If it is, however they want to be, where are they gonna be located? If they're on the other side of the tree line, I'm okay with that, I can't see it. But if you back up 40 feet from my property, accuracy. Are there, are there gonna be buildings built there? Are y'all taking notes?
Oh, they are.
Are there gonna just be, are there just gonna be buildings in there and then they're gonna ask tenants to come in? Or do they already have tenants in mind? What's the road access gonna be here? We have a residential street, Kett Drive is basically a residential street, although I know it's maintained by the state. It's basically houses on both sides of that road. How are you gonna access these industries? Are you gonna send big trucks up and down my road for my ranch open right to backside? How are you gonna access this property?
I'm afraid your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I had a whole list of things that I could talk to them about in the meeting, but those are some of the things, and I think my neighbors would agree, those are some of our concerns about the property. So thank you very much.
Our time limit is four minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Sorry.
She could take my time.
She's got the same concern that we do. So, we're here to hear both sides, so is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter tonight? Yes, sir, come forward, give us your name and your address.
Larry Norris, 27th Ave, Kett Drive. December, I'll be in the neighborhood 45 years. There's two other families that's been in the neighborhood a little longer than me. I'm at the corner of K and Gun.
All right.
And I just want them, good neighbors to move in. And that's all I'm asking.
That's all everybody wants, is a good neighborhood. You're right, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Norris. Is anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Just say one thing.
Yes, sir. My name is Robert Stalls, and I hope she didn't take my four minutes.
You're on your own.
We're a neighborhood. And to me, it's, you know, we live up against the property. But we've got a whole, there's as many people on our street that don't live up against the property that are gonna be affected by what happens here. And it's kind of a slight to them, but I know what the law is, I know what the regulations are, you have to just, we live 300 feet. But I think that everybody on the east side of Kett Drive also needs to be invited to the city of Brooklyn, not just those on the west side. And I think the people on the east side of Kett Drive should also get notifications from the city of Brooklyn. We are a community, we're fairly close to it. So it would just be a common courtesy thing if the whole community is involved, it is not just the west side of the street.
Were there notices sent to the east side of the street?
I'm looking to see, we have, so we send notices to properties that are within 300 feet. So if they're within 300 feet, which I can't tell right now, but they probably...
The people on the west side of the street did not get notices.
The east?
I mean, the east side did not get notices.
It does lots of things, so...
So we just appreciate it, it's a common courtesy.
So by ordinance, we send them out to the property within that 300-foot radius. If there's folks that are on the west side, you can send us a list of the properties that you might think should be interested. The applicant can also send out their own letters as well, too. As you can imagine, it makes it problematic for folks to say, okay, just send it to this...
area and not to this area. We don't wanna discount. You know, obviously, we've gotta follow our UBO and the requirements, so.
Well, I understand that.
It sounds to me, which is also not a requirement, that the applicant's willing to have the public meeting to solicit the input of the neighborhood, so they'll be reaching out, and they can, you can reach out to them to see if they can extend their notification area, because most likely, they're using that 300-foot list as well.
Yes, well, the letter that came from them did list per 300 feet. So, it would be a common courtesy that the whole neighborhood is involved in this, and 'cause like Larry did not get notification, so we had to let him know. And we did let everybody else in there to know. It would be good if y'all... And if you need addresses, we got somebody here that can supply you with all those addresses.
Thank you, Robert. Yes, sir.
I'm David Brown. I live at 2805 Keck Drive. Tammy, my wife, we have been there 28 years. We also run Browns Marine across the street in the city limits. So, we're taxpayers in Burlington and county taxpayers, two locations. Been here all my life. My dad was here around a place all names true. I don't see the logic really with some of the issue here with the... You're gonna cut us off in between our creek, Gum Creek, and gonna have a neighborhood there in, just by itself, with an industrial area beside of it. I do understand progress is gonna happen regardless. It's a good thing, most of the time, to have this type of progress. As you'll notice, the one property that belongs to Ted Grandstaff, the pastor over Hope Church, is the area that's not zoned, in the middle of the big lot, that looks like a boomerang or something at the bottom.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Of course, he's sitting with seven acres in the middle of that area that is intended to be rezoned in one.
Okay, your time is up. I'm sorry.
That was quick.
That's my...
That you're kinda isolated. I would like to see a little more buffer zoning.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All these concerns you can take to your neighborhood meeting, which, by the way, is not required by the, to have a neighborhood meeting. We do it out of courtesy, like you said, sir, that we would invite the neighbors to have a sit-down with the applicant, try to hash things out, as Mr. Black has said. So, I hope that when you come back, Mr. Coons, that we can have a shorter list, a more intentional list, rather than a list with everything but 10 things. So, we hope that some of this will be scratched at least, to make it look like a more limited use. Any other comments?
I'm speaking for Grant Lutz, 2561, Keck Drive. Jordan and I purchased our property almost exactly a month ago, so I haven't been here near as long as many of the residents. And I would just like, words of my concern to this council, that this be developed as good neighbors. Obviously, we purchased on Keck Drive for what it is today, a residential neighborhood, a very quiet neighborhood that backs up to quiet properties. Totally not opposed to the development. We're just looking for good neighbors that will kinda keep it what it is. And I'd also be concerned about frontage on Keck Drive. I know they have frontage on both South Anthony and Keck, and Keck is a quiet residential street, so I'd be concerned about development on Keck as frontage. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Grant. One last call. Any other comments from anybody who'd like to speak tonight?
What was your I D. again, sir?
2561, Keck.
Thank you.
2561. Any last comments, Mr. Coons?
No, just to say, of course, our notice lives in the city of Burlington, so that's who we're sending out to.
Right.
And we look forward to meeting everybody in the community and talking about locations and all those kind of details.
Right.
You're right, it's difficult to start with a really large use. And again, we're just trying to get rid of the real problem once, and leave some flexibility for future development. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's comments, sir, as well.
One more time for you.
And I would say, I have to look forward to being with you all in a few weeks and hearing your concerns and listening and doing what we can. We certainly want to be good neighbors as well, so we appreciate it. We'll talk to you all in a few weeks.
So, when is your proposed meeting, exactly? The 7th? It is? Okay.
It's on the... Monday to 17th and 6:00.
Monday, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, do what you can on both sides to come to a compromise, understand what each other's saying, listen, you know, be good neighbors, and let's talk it out. And when you come back to us the next time you're here, we will make a decision about the rezoning at that time. Then, you still have the city council meeting, which is a public hearing, to go to, and that is required meeting, and once you go there, you can have, you know, have your say there, too. So, nothing's done until the city council says so. Any other questions from the commissioners on our agenda? We have another I D. too, but any other comments? All right, and thank you all for coming. Be safe home.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We got through that pretty well. Sorry we didn't have the proper posters, but we probably did need some more time on this land. Yeah. They're starting to meet already?
Well, they're talking very good.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Black, for your comments, concern and post-approach. Item number six, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Ms. Tammy Lawson, planning director, to present unified development ordinance text amendments.
Good evening, everybody. Let me just pull... I have a very, 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 very brief presentation, and so, as you're aware, we come to planning and zoning commission every so often with some proposed text amendments. These amendments are typically a result from interaction engagement with the community. So, tonight, there are three, three text amendments that we're proposing, and this, please just kinda summarize, just as a reminder, the iterations that we've had in the past. So, this is UBO text amendment 4-22. The first one is dealing with accessory dwelling units. So, the UBO currently has a provision that accessory dwelling units cannot exceed 35% of the principal structure of the finished floor area for a dwelling unit. The staff is making a recommendation to increase that from 35, excuse me, from 35 to 50%. So, this is the clip out from what our proposal is, and they concede other B. That's the change that we're proposing. And the reason, just in some background, we've had some discussions with residents and property owners that, you know, a home that may be 800 feet square feet or less than 1,000 square feet, having that 35% cap really doesn't provide enough square footage for a second accessory dwelling unit. So, the staff reviewed that issue, and we want to encourage, want to encourage a diversity of housing types, and accessory dwelling units are one option in order to do that.
So, I don't think we left the Senate path, did we? Did anybody get this?
It was included in the UBO. No, this PowerPoint wasn't included in your packet, but the description of the amendments were.
So, ADU, what is that? Is that like a storage building?
No, no, it's a residential, it's a residential unit, so it's...
It's like a house for your parents behind your house.
Right, it could be above the garage, or a second add-on unit.
So, if I got a house of 2,000 square feet, I can build a 1,000 square foot accessory dwelling unit?
Under this, under this amendment, that would be correct.
Right, and you do it 35%.
That's right.
Does it have to be contiguous, or it could be a separate dwelling?
It can be, it can be part of a detached structure, so it could be, if you have a detached garage, you could have it on the second floor. But it has to be serviced by public infrastructure. It has to be under the same address. It is, there are use-specific standards that you would have to meet in order to have a lawful accessory dwelling unit, and this provision is just one of them.
But it doesn't have to be attached to, nothing that's already there?
No, no. It can be a stand, it can be a standalone building.
You could build a little, little standalone apartment separate.
That's right. That's right. And this is something that exists on the books today. We're not adding this as a new residential type. We're just recommending that that percentage be increased in order to encourage additional accessory dwelling units.
So, this would be, and forgive me if I make a mistake on this one, but the ADU limit increase would be up by one away from any applicable minimum square foot residential requirements, and either somewhere else in the UBO or the town cover there, or that.
This, so currently, the, they would still have to meet the residential building standards?
Yeah, yeah.
The building code?
Yeah. Specifically for minimum square foot, it's gonna be a requirement for that.
Right.
I never saw any of this. I'm sorry. I missed this.
It was in, it was in the pack.
Was it in the original package?
It was in the link.
The second pack, yeah.
It was in the link, the original link.
Okay. All right, keep going.
All right, sir. So, then, the, the second modification deals with standards to deal with outdoor speakers in drive-through facilities. This is dealing with restaurants, drive-through restaurants, per se. We are making a recommendation to change the provisions dealing with the distance of how far an outdoor speaker can be. Right now, the outdoor speakers associated with drive-through restaurants have to be at least 50 feet from any lot line of any residential district, and what we're suggesting is that it be based on the distance of the actual structure itself.
So, it can be closer, the speaker actually can be closer to a neighboring house?
It can be, it depends on where the house is located. So, right now, so for example, if, if your speaker is, let's say, 10 feet from the property line that abuts a residential district, it would not be allowed. What we're suggesting is you measure it from where the structure is itself, not from the property line. So, the distance...
Be enjoying the structure.
Correct.
So, if the house is way over here, 60 or 70 feet?
Then you comply, right? But if, but if you, if you're, if your building and your drive-through is kinda right up against the property line, then it's very difficult to meet that 50-foot requirement.
So, a neighbor would not be guaranteed 50 feet in some cases. It could be less.
If the house, it depends on where the house is placed, so if that...
Not guaranteed. At some houses, it would be fine, but some houses, no.
This would guarantee that it would be at least 50 feet from the, from the structure. It couldn't be any closer than 50 feet.
So, if the lot next door was vacant?
Then this, then this would not, this would not apply.
Okay, but then let's say, two months later, they build a house up near the property line. Did the guy's gotta remove his speaker?
No, no, it would, the site plan for the approved restaurant would be in effect. It wouldn't have, the, the home would not have to do anything, and they would not have to modify their site plan, 'cause it would be retroactive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions about this?
I had that same question you had, like, with a little row of townhomes 49 feet from the speaker.
And it's 50 feet from the dwelling.
If you really build townhomes, letting development comes in, they're gonna be subject to the buffer requirements that they have, too. So, there's, there's, it would be, whatever they would be bound to at that point, from the residential perspective, they might have a buffer on the, against the commercial development as well. It's hard, hard to say. But what we're also suggesting, too, is the perimeter buffer between the speaker and the residential lot has to have a fence or, and a wall, too, so that would help to minimize any, any negative impact.
Okay. Never seen a sound stuck at a wall, have you, gentlemen? Seems like the vehicle ride damn over.
I live next to one. He's a prince. I rent an apartment. First time I hear it, this speaker, oh my God.
And then the last one that we have, and again, these are all just recommendations that we're looking for your feedback on. Staff is recommending that automobile sales and rentals be included in the medium industrial zoning districts. Right now, we're only permitted in the light industrial zoning districts and the general business districts, and we're, we're asking for them to be considered, to be included in the medium industrial zoning district, which would be compatible with automobile repairs and automobile towing and storage lots, which currently are allowed in LI and MI as well. So, this is the third recommendation.
And this is for automobile sales?
Correct, correct.
Trucks?
Correct.
Trailers, like they were talking about in our last meeting?
Yeah, we, this was, this was exactly what the guys were last talking about, was the fact that they, they went down to light industry because they couldn't. They think I deal with that. They went down to light industry rather than staying in medium industry.
Right, this would allow that, that use in that, in that zoning district, and not require them to go through a rezoning application.
Any other questions? Now, if we ask you to move forward?
Yeah, considering that this does not have to go through the re-notification process, or there's no public notification, staff is asking for your consideration for this item to move forward tonight. We do have it consistent with our comprehensive plan, and we're recommending consistency of in-state option on the line may include it in the patent.
Okay. Anybody have that option that wanna read?
I'll make a motion, recommend for a little... I make a motion to recommend for a request of amendment City of Burlington's unified development ordinance for proposed text amendments based on the persistence of proposed text amendments in the comprehensive plan in that section four land use goal one recommendation of comprehensive plan calls from date to unified development ordinance section four land use goal one recommendation five comprehensive plan calls for insurance and land type decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. This action is reasonable and public interest in that section four land use goal two recommendation four of the comprehensive plan addresses confusion, confusion, conflicts, and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new unified development ordinance section four land use goal two recommendation four of the comprehensive plan in new U D O will be modern, graphically intensive, and user-friendly from both public slash petitioner and administrator.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for chairman.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Would you call for a vote? Who's lost it?
Sure. Chair Parker?
No.
President Parker?
Approve.
Commission member Beasley?
Prove.
Commission member Black?
Prove.
Uh, commission member Gammel?
Prove.
And commission member Nelson?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is that it?
That's it, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, the- Mr. Chairman, yes, before we adjourn, I'd like to address the, the council members, uh, members, if I might, for a moment, uh, received a call this afternoon from the chair, uh, asking about the zoning signs because, uh, he knew that I was going out to check out the facilities, and I did, of course, I did not see them. They also made reference to an article that had been published in a local paper, uh, referencing our, our meetings and, uh, the fact that we don't care what you think to the public, and I was kind of thinking more like I don't care what the paper thinks. It's probably the best way to put it. Uh, and I just wanted to kind of address some of the statements made that I didn't quite agree with, um, and kind of explain my way of, my rationale in some of the comments that I made, or was claimed to have made. Um, this being, of course, the fact that the last time we met with the framer of the U D A, and I cannot remember the-
Chad.
Chad, thank you so much. I met with, Chad met with us, and I specifically asked him that evening, this being a public meeting as opposed to a public hearing, were we required to hear from the public? Well, his answer was no. Now, maybe, maybe I misunderstood, you're nodding in the front, that, that, that's what Chad said, but, you know, all, obviously, I said that, but it doesn't matter. The thing about it is, the public can speak. As you saw tonight, the chair has the right to go to the public and say, would you like to speak? Is there anybody here that wants to speak? He's not required to do that, but he can do that. We're not required to hear from them, but we ask from time to time to hear from them. But the thing about it is, there was comment made by, uh, Julie, I think, if forty people, and I, I brought it here because it kind of got to me, and I brought, you know, and, uh, let's say, if, if forty people wanted to speak, I would think that you would want to hear what they say. Well, I don't know, I wouldn't. And, you know, I don't think that, you know, if you're gonna open it up, I would just open the T A C meeting. When the first time something comes in, it's a pre-T A C, anybody in the public come in and talk, ask questions, mull it over. When the staff has their meetings, have the public come in, mull it over. We may or may not get something done in a year. People have the, the opportunity, I mean, you have a right to go to court, but you might have a right to talk in the middle of the court. And that's all we're saying is, yeah, you've got a right. Mr. Parker will give you the exercise to, if you would like to say something, you know, do that, but he's not required to. The idea is, these people can come here to this meeting, glean the information from this meeting, and then when they go to the public hearing, be better prepared to talk to the city council. This is not a format for them to come practice, to come in here and, and spend twenty or thirty minutes practicing their speech to go to the city council. And that's all I'm saying. We're not saying, as some, as Charlie mentioned, or Charles mentioned, like, we're trying to take away their rights to speak. We're not. They have the right to speak if they're asked. It's not a given, and we don't deny them. Mr. Parker has always said, and said, you might want to ask any questions, you might have any comments. So we haven't taken away anybody's rights. First, they weren't rights that they had to get in. So I just wanted to make that clear, that we're here as a body to listen. If we need information, we ask, but there's nothing in the U D O that says, hey, come down here, you've, you've got your four minutes. It's something we give. It's not that we don't care as it's common. The only good thing about this article is that I saw that it tied Mr. Parker and James and I together, and I thought that was an honor for me. I took it as a, a high honor to be put in the presence of these two gentlemen. So I just want to kind of clear that, that up. As far as taking away somebody's right that they didn't have, we're not giving that. And the other thing, it mentioned is the fact that, that was mentioned that, I can't believe that y'all are trying to give people more notice, but then squelch in their, their right to, to voice. As you could see tonight, if it was up to me, I could have noticed out with a skywriter for everything going to planning and zoning, because there are, there are people that live in East Burlington that might be old, or they may not understand what's going on, that they have children in West Burlington or North Burlington or South Burlington, that might like to know what's going on in their parents' or their uncle or their aunt's neighborhood. I have no problem. I would love to be able to give everybody a notice. When I asked to increase the, the distance from two hundred to three hundred to four hundred, it could have been more. These people tonight, they're worried about, maybe there's gonna be a five-story building in their neighborhood. Well, you could be a half mile away and be impacted by that building. So I, you know, trying to limit the notification, no, I, I wish we could notify everyone. But there again, if you want forty people to speak at the T A C, if you want forty people to come in and, and go to staff readings, if you want forty people to go to a conditional meeting and stuff like that, you know, I think if we did that, we'd find that we'd never get anything done. That's all of us, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Black. That is one reason why I asked for no repeats, that somebody make a point, and if somebody else has the same point, they would withhold it, since we already had that point on the floor.
Well, as a point of order there, too, whenever you have, if you have forty people to spend four minutes each, then I think that the, the rebuttal should be the same amount of time. So, I mean, we would never, ever, you know. Point, we'll take it. Are there any other final comments? Anybody like to say? Now we'll take your motion.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Set. All in favor, say aye.